Brought in Town Council Committee of the Whole, special meeting where we are continuing our budget deliberations. Councillors present, Granatowski, Bordelain, Baumgartner, Franco, Aubrey, Parker, and Zepary. Councillor Heed notified that he may be running late, and Councillor Melendez is on his way. Did I say councillor Parker as well? Granatowski, Bordelain, Baumgartner, Franco, Aubrey, Parker, and Zepary. All right, great. So we have seven councillors. That is a quorum. And we are on to new business this evening, and we are starting with Town Functions Human Resources. Account 1012, and this begins on page 83 in your budget book. Councillor Baumgartner, please.
Move the number of $379,962.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Could you repeat it, please?
Move the amount of $379,962.
Moved by Baumgartner, and that was Franco or Parker for the second?
Yes.
Thank you. For account 1012, 379962 by Baumgartner, seconded by Parker. And Mr Zagami, Human Resources Director, is with us this evening. Mr Zagami, would you like to present your budget, sir? You're muted if you're talking, Mr Zagami.
You know somebody gave me problems with this earlier.
No, I didn't know that. Thanks.
Starting off with the Personnel Services is up $9,412. The operating expenses are down $10,132, and there's an overall budget decrease of 22% with a decrease naturally of $720. Basically, let me go through these accounts, each one. Start off with 5201.
If you just want to go through the cost centers briefly, yes, please. That would be good. Thank you.
All right, first of all, we're applying for the, to maintain the postage and printing at about $1,000 this period, and advertising, we're looking at saying that 350, 3,500 on that. Now, the postage and printing, we'll probably have a few more contracts this year. So that means there'll be a lot more printing, plus there's always a printing when we have to get any information we have for the health benefits, retirement, et cetera. Advertising, naturally, that goes along with how we're trying to work toward recruiting, and basically most of that is, goes into that part.
Sorry, I meant the, just the highlights that you, the narrative that you had written as far as leadership, recruiting, employee labor relations, benefits, and risk management.
Oh.
Or you could continue what you're doing, whatever you'd like. I think we have another councillor here. It is 607. Melendez is with us. So we are at eight councillors. Thank you for joining us, Councillor Melendez. We're on account 1012, which is Human Resources, and 379,962 was moved and seconded, and that is the number on the floor. And Mr Zagami was just giving us some highlights of his account.
The next one I'd like to bring to your attention is on the DEI. Basically, with DEI, we were at $40,000 last year, the training, and we've been able to move that back some. So this year, we're looking at something like about 1,700 on that. Yeah, with, because we're looking at three events, 2,500 dollars on each event, and also looking at about $10,000 for training on that. So we've come down, we figured DEI this year is, basically is action. Last year was training, not that we won't have training this year, but basically, we tend to, whatever we learned last year, put that into action. Our phone is $600. There's nothing unusual about that. The next thing that's a little bit high for us is $3,000 for the shredder. We've just decided to put that on the, on this particular, on 1012, so that we, $3,000 shredder that has to be completely replaced. That's not its last legs. That was one other thing we're having. The other part I'm looking at is the background checks and everything. We had dropped our drug testing last year because of COVID-19, so I think we'll probably not budget money into that this year or somewhere. But basically, background checks, drugs, and hearing tests. We've had now, with the hearing test, we've had an OSHA audit this year. With OSHA's audit, we were able to find out, we now have to have a hearing test for everybody that comes in and match their hearing to see if any hearing loss based on anything we, any of the machinery we have.
Councillor Parker, I see you have your hand up. Is it a question for the account, or did you need clarification on something Mr Zagami is reviewing?
Well, it's a question on one of the accounts.
Okay.
If he's ready for questions, or if not, I'll wait a moment.
I'm ready.
Okay. You're, the account, you missed the account you were talking about, the 5281, the Occupational Health, unless I missed that somewhere along the way. But it jumped from 998 to, no, no, wrong count. It was, you have an adjusted 280, and estimated approximately nine, and then $8,000 for that account for fiscal '22. Is this due to HB 604, where you do have to do drug testing for the officers, or is this due to something else?
I'm not sure which one you're on.
5281, the Occupational Health line has jumped up.
Oh, I see you. I heard PPE. Okay, that's, that's basically, we were in our department recently with COVID-19. We were charged with probing all of the, the PPE. You know, everything from the sanitary things, we had sanitized, supplying everybody with gloves, with masks, et cetera. So that's basically what, what that represents. It's a PPE relative to the, to our COVID-19.
Right. Alright, thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question? John, sorry about that. Mr Zagami, how much of that, how much PPE is there left to buy? Is there really going to be much of an ongoing, you know, is that all needed for this year?
Well, we had, we had actually budgeted for it, and the reason for that was, we, there was a grant that we weren't able to find out whether or not that grant is going to come through, which had some problems with the state. With that, we figured we better get the time. We figured it was time to, you know, put that up, yeah. So, that's a judgment call. You know, I know with vaccinations and things like that, but let's face it, masks and everything like that are used daily. And basically, people with masks are kind of disposing of them rather than have to use them every day. So that's, my, getting a lot of the sanitary stuff, or sanitizing desk, et cetera. And people using gloves. So those, those pieces there are being used pretty well.
Councillor Bordelain.
Thank you. I thought the town was getting a stockpile of supplies that could be used. Is that something that could offset this cost?
It could, if it, if we do actually get them. That's, but we have really, we haven't seen that yet. We've seen, we've seen some come from Legally Health District, but the problem is they've sent like shields and minimal mask and things like that. So we've had to put in other audits, so we don't really know where we're going to be at this point.
So, question for John, from the meetings that we attend, the recovery meetings, there is money allocated, correct?
Yes, I think Eileen Cardillo has already gone out to purchase these items. I don't think there'd be an issue, Bob, of getting these materials. I'm not sure this will be needed.
Okay, well, that's, you know, that's, I think that's a judgment call, and we are, you know, we are the ones actually ordering this through Eileen, so.
Well, she's ordered on the grant, though. We were awarded a large grant, and she's ordering off of that grant, and is available to us.
Okay, well, that's, alright.
So how much are we, how much of this budget is for that, that you're stating?
That's what we were looking for, was almost $8,000 for the budget.
Okay. My other question is, in the DEI, do you think it's appropriate to cut it that back that much at this time?
Well, it's not a matter of really cutting it back. What we're, what we're basically doing is, we don't have a $40,000 training right now. Still continuing the training in this particular year, but we don't have a huge training that we had on last year. As I said, we're looking more into action, more than we are just going for the training, but we are training also. It's, that was a very expensive training.
And then under recruitment, how is, how is that line item? Looking to make sure that we're looking for, you know, the best candidates and the diverse candidates around. How is that, the recruitment area going?
Well, I would say the, the workshops with leadership, and we started those subcommittees. One, Melendez is one of the chairpersons on it, and a lady, young lady from the senior center is also on it. And I would say that I'd rather give them their option to say how it's going. I, I think with the few meetings we've had, we've had the, we've had them actually attend meetings. They've come over to HR, see how the process works as far as recruiting goes, front to back. And then we've started to work on some, from everything from session planning to brainstorming, all of these things that start and that come to play. This, this particular subcommittee is kind of young. It's only had about two months with getting started on that. I would say it's in the right direction, that's for sure.
So with recruiting, budgeted for 6,000, is that what I'm seeing?
Right.
So the 4,000, that's, okay, so, but, I guess.
Well, to answer the question, many of the departments actually pay for their own recruiting. They also pay for recruiting too, but when they have, when they have a vacancy, many of the departments will be paying for that, but we'll still be going through adding money onto it in order to get the, the DEI with the inclusion, you know. That's, that's what we're really trying to do. We are partnering with like the police force right now on the CSOs. Want to make sure that they've got, you know, their, their resources to push getting a good, solid net put out there, and we're also adding money to that too. So we actually join in to make sure we're getting the right amounts of recruiting for everyone.
Okay. And then my last question regarding the hearing testing, drug testing. Are we not sending folks out to have this done at an occupational health facility, or are we doing this internally?
No, these things have to be done actually by outside agencies.
Okay. So the drug testing now is being done outside as well?
I'm not doing any drug testing right now with the COVID-19. That, that may come back. But when we do drug testing, we don't, we do not fail anyone, just so you know that. When we do an internal drug test, what we do is, if it doesn't, if it's questionable, or if it doesn't, someone didn't pass, we send them down to PEQA, and PEQA does the actual test at that point.
Okay.
We've never failed anyone.
Yeah, no, that wasn't my, that's not my issue. I just know that we were doing them internally initially, and I was just wanting to save costs. If we have to send people out to occupational therapy for hearing, I just, I was wondering if it would make sense sometimes when you already have that as one of the options. You can package, like, we send, you know, employees to have drug testing, hearing testing, and all that in one bundle. And so I was just wondering, it would make sense with COVID and bodily fluids and all of that, to just kind of have it all done by occupational health. Didn't know if that was an option.
Well, actually, they have, they have occupational health that's going, we have an outside agency, but the Con OSHA is kind of led us to when we had our last inspection.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I had a question, please, on employee and labor relations. It zeroed out, so there's nothing allotted for that this year. And when I'm looking on page 84, I'm looking at the contracts, and it looks like the next three contracts end in June of 2022. So this line item, then, you won't need any money for it because the contracts aren't going to be up. You won't need the money until FYE 2023? Is that where we're going with this? Or I don't understand if we've got three contracts pending at the end of June 2022, but there's nothing included in the employee labor relations line, or maybe I'm not understanding the situation?
Well, when we looked at how splitting this up was, there was, there was no real way to split it up. So we, what we did actually, we took the same amount of funds, and that's how we kind of allocated it the best as we could. But we couldn't really split up the recruiting, the labor relations, et cetera, because it just wasn't, it wasn't a way to narrow it down. As long as we had the money, and plus, what I do with a lot of the people, is I have a lot of cross-utilization in that department, district people, so we really try to utilize them in all different ways. So we couldn't really split that up, not just throwing numbers there.
Okay, thank you for explaining. Appreciate that. Any other councillors have questions? Okay, seeing councillor Board, or let me ask if there are any other first-time hands. Okay, councillor Bordelain, for your second time?
I mean, I know it's not much money, but John, should we decrease this by the 8,000 then? Would that be appropriate?
I feel comfortable with that.
Okay. So I'd like to put another number on the table. I'll do, I guess that would be 371962.
Hold on.
Did I do that right?
Is that what Mr Bird is checking?
Yeah, that's correct.
371962.
So first amended motion moved by Bordelain, $371,962, and is the second, Parker?
Yes.
Okay. And councillor Bordelain, do you feel your rationale is clear enough, or did you wish to speak?
No, just based on, you know, what we're getting for funding for the PPE, and John thinks that we are using that fund for that. And if it's allocated in this budget, it would make sense to remove it so that the funds are coming from the appropriate place. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wish to speak on the first amended motion? I just wanted to note that councillor Aubrey has had to step away. I know she's there, but she's away from her computer. It is 6:21, and she will notify us when she comes back. Any discussion on the first amended figure? Okay, seeing none, we will vote on $371,962. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
All you do is listen.
So.
Only do these.
So moved unanimously. Let me just count and make sure, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We have seven councillors present in voting on this that moved unanimously, seven in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions for account 1012. Thank you. All right, we are on to insurance and claims, and this is on page 88. I believe we are on, it begins on page 88. I believe this is councillor Parker, correct?
Yes. Hi, for insurance and claims, account number 1070, I moved $766,640. I still move.
Is there a second? I'll second. Moved by Parker and seconded by Granatowski for account 1070, and the amount of $766,640. Mr Zagami, did you wish to speak to this? Mr Bird, did you wish to speak to this account?
Oh, he's muted. He's just like, he's going to get unstuck here.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll let him join in. One, two, three. We can't, page 90, under cost centers. The general liability, you could see, jumped up about $57,000. I guess I should start the total first. The total went up about $76,000. What?
I'm unmuted now.
Okay.
Let me mute it.
You have the floor, sir. Go ahead.
Okay, basically, what we've gone up to is, we were adjusted for 2021, on the general liability was 470, 485, and we're asking for this time, $527,271 gap, you'll see. That brings us from 690 all the way up to 70.
Are you continuing with the other cost centers, sir?
Seems we have an issue in there. Where'd we leave off?
He was going, running through the cost centers. He did general liability, so we need motor vehicles, and then the rest.
Okay, slight increase in the motor vehicle liability, physical damage, going from $94,500 to $106, so we had a bit of a $12,000 increase there. Public officials liability actually dropped a little bit by about $1,000. Shellfish Commission for their insurance, actually was. Sorry, the, the public officials liability was pretty stagnant. The shellfish dropped by 1,000. Admin and claim payment, pretty static, up just a tiny bit. And unemployment, it's up a bit. And remember, we paid the full cost for unemployment. So really, it's just general, of the unemployment going up a bit, it's really just general changes. There's nothing drastic going on. It's just, oh, he is unmuted. Bob, did you want to add something, anything to that?
Yes, basically, what we're looking at also was, when we're going to the top line, you're in the property. We actually had to bring that there's schools coming in. That's why the increase is larger on that top line.
So was, he's breaking up, Mr Bird, so he's talking about, that on page 88, cost center zero, general liability.
Yes, that the new schools caused that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The newer schools, yeah.
Thank you. Do councillors have questions on the insurance account, insurance and claims? Okay, seeing none, we will vote on $766,640 for account 1070. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously, and we are at seven councillors still, and there isn't a attendee. I'm not sure who it is. It is councillor Aubrey. Okay. All right, so councillor Aubrey is back with us. I thought I moved her over. Councillor Aubrey is back at 627, and councillor Aubrey, we are just about to begin self-funded plans on page 1071. Or on page 92, this is account 1071, and I believe this is councillor Franco.
Which page, please?
We are on account 1071. It begins on page 92.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm glad you came back. All right, councillor Franco, you have the floor. If you could move the number, then we'll let Mr Bird explain.
For the self-funded plans, account number 1071, I moved the amount of $10,810,103.
And I will second that, and councillors, you may note that that is different from what is in your book, and Mr Bird is going to explain right now. So that was $10,810,103, moved by Franco and seconded by Granatowski. Mr Bird, would you like to inform the council and the public as to why that number is the way it is?
Sure. If you look under Personnel Services on page 96, the very first item, Retirement 5152, it currently says $3,806,76. It actually should be $3,494,500. That's where the error was, caused the total to up.
So that's on page 96.
Yes.
5152.
Correct.
The final number should be $3,494,5, and that's the difference that the manager noted. Did you want staff, Mr Zagami, or would you like to address this account, sir?
Are, are you still having issues with Mr Zagami? Are you able to?
It should be, I'm being heard now, I believe. Okay, so basically, with the retirement, one of the things we did see, why the, why the ADAC did go up, was, was the PAC had COLAS to, on, that's, that basically raised some money in that way.
Seems to be something going on with his computer. I'm not sure what's happening, but he's in another part of the office. I'm going through it, the, the employee benefits, you'll see, is up a little bit. It's actually, oh, wait, no. I don't think so. It's actually up a little bit. Most of that is, we've run into, one thing we're trying to do this year is, we were, have a deficit in the fund balance of approximately.
We put $327,000.
Yeah. We have $327,000 of that is actually paying for a 10-year period, starting to pay off the deficit in the healthcare fund. And the reason otherwise, it's stayed pretty, if you took that out, it's pretty, you know, I'll get on here. Mr Zagami is going to join us, take my computer.
Thank you. The number that they were providing, I believe, is on page 92, I think, is the narrative that they're going to be discussing, if I'm not mistaken. Hi, Mr Zagami, thank you.
Hello. Helps. Okay, basically, I couldn't tell where you were at, so I thought we wanted to just cover the retirement. On market valuing and that stuff, do we need to?
Cost center, the health first, or the 327 we're paying towards the 10-year, kind of 10-year plan to account the deficits? Do you have your book there?
Yeah.
I'll just move into workers' comp.
Over down workers' comp. Okay, workers' comp, we've made some strides this year. We've actually gone down to reduction of about $49,000, almost $50,000 a year. So that's been, that's been really good for us. And it's true, we did actually training. We've done a lot of training and our incentives we've put forth, and I think that's made a big difference. On life insurance, 17 grand is the cost, is everybody life insurance. And we also get the savings with them because our EAP that would normally cost us almost $5,000 a year, we end up saving that by having free EAP as we go with Ghanian on our life insurance. Health liability, okay, we were at, in July, 219, 51,724,72, and then it decreased in 2020 to 59,807,000. Okay, actuarially, actuarial valued assets went from 20 to 22, so we did go up in that. And we decided to give the general fund $448,730 this year. That's the end of those. Questions?
Okay. So we have. So we have all the cost centers laid out in front of you, counselors, from ninety two to ninety four, if any of you have questions on that, or if you need clarification on the difference in the number that was moved. Does anybody need the floor at this point?
I had a question.
Yes, Counselor Overy.
If, if we go back to where it says annual required contribution on page ninety four, it says accrued liability, and it was fifty one thousand, fifty one million seven hundred and twenty four seventy two. And it, this year it's fifty nine, eight oh seven. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes.
Is that what it cost us?
No. So outstanding total liability.
That's the outstanding accrued liability. It's went from fifty one up to fifty nine.
And that, that's for what?
That's when
Sorry.
Well, that could be anything from where your, where your stocks are or anything like that, all the way to more people taking out benefits. That's basically what that accounts for.
I think this is, I think this is the OPEB line. Is that the OPEB line?
Yeah, let me, let me add something in there. For the reason for the increase in there, there was two changes this year with OPEB. Actually, another thing, but two of the changes were they adopted both for health and for OPEB, a new mortality table was adopted by us, but by the company, by the industry, or by the company anyways. That changed the lifespans, like that are expecting people to live. But the other thing is, we went from a seven point two five percent expected interest rate to a seven percent, which always increases your liability when you do that. The recommended is to get down to about a six percent eventually, but that's going to take a while because it does increase our costs as we go. The other thing interesting about OPEB, we had in the past up till, I think it was from like two thousand and ten to two thousand and seventeen, we spent an average of about one point one, one point two million a year, and we just dropped down as times got a little tighter. And so we were no longer doing the ADEC, which would have been that one point one, one point two million range. Well, this year, the company got confused about some of our retirees and the plans they're on, and they missed, they actually calculated this year based on some of the wrong plans. So it dropped extra this year. We don't want to drop that, so it's really a bit under this. We don't want to drop that much because it's artificial. It's going to pop back up next year, so we're trying to find a balance. We'd like to eventually get back up, you know, to the nine hundred thousand to a million range, or at least eight hundred thousand, but that's going to be a process to get that high. In the meantime, we're really doing what we think we should have been doing this year, just without the artificial decrease. So it's a little bit complicated this year.
Counselor Overy, you still have time left if you wanted to ask more questions?
I'm more confused than when I started, so I think I'll leave it alone. Thank you.
Sorry about that. I didn't do a good job on that.
No.
Oh, I have questions about the OPEB liability. You said the, it sounded like we're doing similar to what we did with the retirement, where we reduced the actuarial something which causes us to increase. So what is the percent for OPEB? Does it match the retirement?
No, the retirement's at still a seven and a quarter, the OPEB, however, it's on our agenda coming up for a next retirement board. So OPEB's at seven, retirement's at seven point two five, but I expect next year, well, probably, most likely, in May, authorized for the next cycle, the seven percent for the retirement.
Okay.
And again, as you know, every couple of years, we'll drop it down a little bit, trying to get to be where we're supposed to be.
Okay, and then the other question, and I can't remember from the Caffer, and I think it was covered there, where are we as far as what kind of shape are we in as far as percent funded, and how does it compare to other municipalities like us? Are we, we used to be ahead of the game?
For the open?
Yes.
Yeah, we're somewhere in the thirty six, thirty eight percent.
Yeah, we're around thirty seven, thirty eight percent, but we are talking to Millman. They said to us that we were about at the, compared to all of their clients, we're at the top seventy five percent.
Almost everyone does pay as you go for open, whereas we've actually been trying to put money away.
Right, okay, great. Okay, and then, all right, so the retirement plan, we are, it looks like the funding ratio
About eighty percent, yes. Part of that is dropping the interest rate, and they also adopted the new mortality table.
Okay. And then can you just explain the three twenty seven again on the health insurance fund?
Our health insurance fund is in a deficit situation. So trying to get that squared away, we're on, we're trying to do a ten-year plan paying three hundred and twenty seven thousand per year. So over the course of ten years, that would be paid off.
Okay, and in what year are we in right now in that?
We're just starting it this year.
The first year, so for nine more years, we'll be kicking in an extra three to make up the deficit.
Right.
Okay, great, thank you on that one. And then let me just see if there's anything else while I have you here. The, the workers' comp amortization, you change the length of the amortization from five to three, or three to five, and I'm just not sure I'm understanding why that happens. If you could just touch on that briefly, I'm sorry. Lots of questions on this stuff.
We had, we found that our numbers were starting to improve, so that's why we had went from the, instead of saying that the five-year amortization, we dropped down to the three.
Okay, I'll look that over. All right, thank you very much. I'll go back to other counselors who wish to speak at this time. Counselor Boardland, you have the floor?
Thank you. In response to what the town manager was speaking about, about being behind on the funds and over the next ten years, allocate a certain amount of money put forward, and how did we get so behind?
And he's going to answer that.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to try to answer this for you. When we can make a contribution to the health insurance fund, we have MDG, who is our broker, what we call them. The third-party administrator, that's what I was trying to think of. And they prepare an annual recommendation or renewal for us every year. And we use that to put the money in the budget. But there have been years when, there's probably twofold, when maybe our claims have exceeded what we had anticipated them to be, which dips into our fund balance. But there was a time several years ago that prior administration had used a bit of the fund balance out of the health insurance fund. When the health insurance fund was first established, they had set a low percentage of fund balance. Should we accumulate one that would be used? And over the past latter years, as it got a little tougher and health insurance increased, they started using more and more of the fund balance to, we reached a point where it actually depleted the fund balance. So now it put us into a deficit situation, and we're trying to, in the last couple of years, we had hoped that the renewals and the claims would go down with changes we'd made to health insurance, moving to the HSA. We just have not been able to make up that deficit like we had anticipated or hoped. So we've reached a point now that we feel, as we did with the workers' comp for many years, that it, it's time to start amortizing that deficit and get us into a positive fund balance situation.
Okay. And, and you think over the next ten years, is that what he said, that we tried to hope to close that gap a little bit?
Yes, we looked at the amount and we thought, we put a couple of scenarios together, looking at, you know, a three, a five, or ten, and we thought because it is healthcare, healthcare is never going to go down, that we thought going with the ten-year amortization was probably the best deal to pick at this time.
And what's the range? What's the amount every year that we're putting towards that again?
Three twenty seven, three hundred and twenty seven thousand. And, you know, we'll review that every year, you know, that we plan to do it over a ten-year plan. We'll look at it every year, and if we're able to, you know, reduce that deficit, and, you know, we'll revisit that to see if that amount could come down a little bit.
All right, so three hundred and twenty seven thousand right now projected over the next ten years to close the gap.
True.
But could be reassessed each year?
Yes, that's correct.
And is this the year that you feel comfortable going with the three twenty seven? Or, I mean, I know what I keep hearing is, I mean, I can't speak for prior council and their decisions, and I applaud you guys for moving forward to close this gap. Do you think that we're being too aggressive this year, considering we have a lot of things that we need to fund and coming off the budget from last year where we had a zero, almost everything out, is it appropriate this year to put the three twenty seven?
I, I do think it's appropriate this year because we did see, our renewal was not as high as it had been in prior years because of COVID. A lot of people had postponed their health expenses. But we do have the, the renewal does include, they called it a COVID factor, that they tack on a little bit so that it, it wouldn't seem, we wouldn't have a dip in the renewal and then have a huge jump last year. But I do think that this is the time, we've talked about this for a couple of years, and I do think that this is the year that we should start this process of trying to get the funds back into the account and, and get rid of that deficit.
Hey, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other first-time speakers? Because I have another question, if not. Okay, I will, I will be brief. When you're talking about drawing down the health deficit is, and I know, I apologize if this is not related, is this what the Board of Ed does? Is this the same type of situation they're in, where they're using their money from their health insurance to kind of keep their budget stable? And if so, are we going to be facing the same situation with them?
Um, I would hope so, but the Board of Ed, they have a lot more of employees and they have a much larger fund balance in that, so they have the ability. And honestly, I don't know in the years that the town used the general fund or the town side of the fund balance. I'm not sure if the Board of Ed did that at the same time. So it's possible that we dipped into our fund bonds and they did not in the early years of the program. But the hope would be that, yes, that we would build it up, and we would not be dipping into that until we had a significant fund balance to look at.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
When you come back, I have another question. I can't put my hand up.
Counselor Overy, you have the floor.
Okay. Didn't some of this come from the fact that it would be eight years ago now that I think that we came in? How many years have we been doing this? Was it eight?
The health insurance fund?
No, no, us being the council.
This is, we're in a year four.
Four. Okay. When we came in four years ago, the retirement fund had been really, what's the right word I want to use? It had not been followed, and, and there were a lot of retirees that had not gotten increases. And we had to work to kind of straighten things out a little bit. And I would think that probably that created some of the deficit. Because we did have to review and, and bring them up to the amounts that they should have been receiving. Am I correct?
Well, that would impact the retirement fund and not the health insurance fund, and I believe
Okay, my mistake. You're good, Cindy.
Thank you.
Counselor Parker?
So when did we notice that this affected the balance, the insurance balance that we're now have to set money aside for the next ten years to pay it? When did that happen?
I believe I, I don't have all of my years here with me, but I think it was, it maybe was three budgets ago that
Which is three years ago.
Yes, right, that I said that there, we couldn't, there was not sufficient fund balance to use to apply to the health insurance contribution. Again, as I said, at that time, we were taking a look at it. We thought that it was possible that it might turn around. So we've had a couple of years now that it did not. So now I'm thinking this is the time that we, we need to, we can't kick it down the road anymore. We need to take a look at this.
Okay, my second question is about the HSA. Does this are we still? Do we split it where we give the employees like a thousand or two thousand at the beginning to help with their insurance? Are we still doing that? And is this where some of the money comes into play where now we have to make sure we have money for that on top of doing the, the rest of the, paying the bill of the HSA?
The amount? I'm sorry.
So switching from what we were paying before to the HSA, it, it seems to me that we're, is spending more money. Unless, I, I don't see a savings anywhere on this, because it looks like now we're paying catch-up to put that money back in.
No, I think if we had not moved to the HSA, and I'll defer to Bob at any point on this, our, our renewals would be considerably higher. We do budget to pay, depending on whether it's a family or a single, towards the dedicated floor employees, but we do budget for that as part of the insurance fund.
So we're basically going to pay at the end of ten years, three million plus, or if I'm probably off on my numbers, but how much are we going to pay after three, ten years?
Well, right now I have the, it's at three point two million dollars. I'm trying to amortize over the years.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions on account ten seventy one self-funded plans? Seeing none, we will vote on the amount of ten million eight hundred and ten thousand one hundred and three dollars, and we are at eight counselors. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? So moved unanimously with eight counselors. Seven, eight. Okay, great, thank you. And we are on to, thank you, Mr. Zagami, we're on to Finance, account ten thirteen, and this begins on page ninety eight. I believe this is going to be Counselor Overy. Because Counselor Heed has not joined us yet.
Are we are we doing these one at a time?
No, you just moved the total appropriation found on page ninety nine, please.
I'd like to move a number of one million six hundred and eighty one thousand one hundred and seventy two dollars. So move.
Second, Parker.
Moved by Overy and seconded by Parker in the amount of one million six hundred and eighty one thousand one hundred and seventy two dollars for account ten thirteen. Finance Director Landry.
Hello.
Hello.
Here we are again. Okay, the Finance Department budget represents a one point six percent increase over the fiscal twenty one budget. And I just want to give you a couple of the highlights that are in the budget for this year. A couple of years ago, maybe starting in fiscal twenty twenty, I had tried to start increasing my professional, professional development line item because I thought it was helpful and a good idea for employees to provide them some additional training so that they can in their respective fields, and as well as to give them that working with their peers. And as I think most of you are aware, over the last couple of years, I've had a lot of retirements and I've had a lot of new employees, so I've tried to put training in there to bring them up for those positions that actually require a certification and those that work in a department that we'd like to see them be certified so that they have the additional training. So that would be one thing that I have had a little increase in my operating expense. As you all know too, this is a reval year, or ten one twenty one will be revaluation, so the assessors budget includes an increase in postage for approximately fourteen thousand revell and personal property notices we'll have to mail out next year when the revaluation is done. I've also tried in the last couple of years, we have a lot of aging equipment and furniture. So I've tried to upgrade some of the furniture in the department, so I'm including some adjustable standing desks for a couple of positions, and I'm trying to upgrade to, to dual monitors for some others in the department that I feel would benefit from it. And I think that's about it. I'm open for any questions if you have them.
Thank you very much. That was very concise. Anyone have questions?
Question, if I can find it. Can I ask a question?
Yes, Counselor Overy, you have the floor.
Yeah, could you tell me? Yeah, could you tell me what aircraft registration is?
That's a revenue. Any aircraft that's down at the airport on South, at the London Airport, they're required to file a registration with the assessors office. And we collect that revenue in our office.
You don't go on trips?
Nope. Well, maybe we could try them out, right? Safe.
Put it on the same account.
We won't need a drone.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have questions? If not, I'd just like to say before, before I call the vote, I want to thank Director Landry for providing very clear explanations and analysis that is very easy for the layman to understand. So thank you.
You're welcome.
We trained her.
Right.
All right, so if there are no questions, we will vote on account 1013 in the amount of 1,681,172. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Some moved unanimously with eight counselors. Thank you. And next, we are on to page 102, and this is the Reval Fund. And I believe we are on Counselor Board along. The narrative starts on page 102. And your totals are on page 104.
Thank you. Let's see, what am I reading here? Sorry. Am I moving the whole 300?
Moving the total appropriation, correct?
Correct. 247,235.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Board on and seconded by Obree for account 2120 in the amount of 247,235. Director Landry.
As you know, we have the Reval Fund that was created several years ago so that we accumulate funds that we have sufficient money available when we have to do the revaluation every five years. So in this year's budget, last year, we had the bulk of the money to to hire the Reval Company that's out there in the field right now. So next year, what I have included is primarily for some tax maps that we have to have made. And it's also legal fees for typically when we have a revaluation, we will see our legal fees increase in the year after the evaluation. And that's really all of the cost. We have a little bit of cost in there for paper, just a few office supplies, paper and envelopes for mailings that we have to do.
Thank you very much. And Counselor Obree, did you have a question?
Yes, I was wondering, recently there was a mailing that went out where they showed increase in assessments.
Oh, I don't think those have gone out yet. They, we did send a mailing out that was notifying that Kyler Technologies was going to start doing their field work and that they might come to your house to talk to you or to do some measurements. But we don't have any of the valuations yet, so we haven't sent anything out yet about new assessments.
I got a thing from the town telling me my assessment was going up by a thousand dollars. Probably about a month ago. I'll find it and talk to you about it another time. I just read something that had been done universally.
No, I'm sorry. I'm unaware of what that is, but I will find out and get back to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I didn't, shouldn't put a personal item on the floor. I really wasn't going there. I just thought maybe everybody had gotten those.
No, they're just at the very beginning of the revaluation, so we won't have that information for a while.
I apologize for making our personal thing. I'm all done.
Thank you. Any other counselors have questions on the Reval Fund? Okay, seeing no questions, we will vote on account 2120 in the amount of 247,235. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We're at eight counselors that passes unanimously, eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions. And we are now to page 197. And this is capital reserves contributions. It's wrong page. Give me a second. I gotta get there, guys. I'm all color coded and I can't find this page. There we go. Ran out of green taps and I had to use a different color. All right, so we're on page 197 is where the narrative starts for account 1075. And Counselor Melendez, the figures are on page 198, please.
I make a motion for account number 1075, the amount of 4 million.
I'm sorry, Counselor Melendez, Director Landry.
This is the one where I give you the number?
Okay.
Based on the changes that have made by the council, that the number for 1075 was 3,700,000.
Even 3,700,000?
Yes.
I apologize, Counselor Melendez.
That's okay. I make a motion for account number 1075 in the amount of 3,700,000.
Second, Parker.
Moved by Melendez and seconded by Parker, the 3,700,000. Director Landry, if you just want to explain that, please.
This is the amount that the general fund will contribute to the capital reserve fund for the projects that were approved, previously approved by the council.
Counselor Ober. Did you wish to ask a question?
Yes, please. You're saying a certain amount of this came out of our reserve? Is that correct?
No, this is the contribution that the general fund will make to the capital improvement fund for the capital projects that were approved by the council earlier in the budget process.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So this, this number equals everything we approved in the CIP budget?
With the, yes.
No other questions? Okay, we will vote on account 1075 in the amount of 3,700,000. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with eight counselors, thank you. And the last account is Capital Reserve Fund 5010. And this is on page 200. And do we need to adjust this, Director Landry as well?
Yes. The number for this would be 4,175,000 even. And that includes the general fund and the water pollution control projects. Previously approved.
Counselors of Perry, did you wish to move that number for 5010?
I move the amount of 4,175,000.
And I will second that. 4,175,000 for account 5010 moved by Zepary and seconded by Granatowski. And Director Landry, did you just want to give a quick overview of what this is, please?
Yes, this is the sum of the general fund projects and/or projects funded from the general fund and projects funded from the water pollution control in the CIPs, total of 4.175.
Do counselors have questions for Director Landry on 5010? Counselor Ober.
So it says that the overall increase in this budget is 2,303,500. Is that correct? We've added that much?
No, that was when we had the proposed budget of the 4,826. That overall increase compared that to the 21 budget, that is not, that number will change, has changed now that you made some reductions to the CIP.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay, any other counselors have questions on 5010? I see none. We will vote on account 5010 in the amount of 4,175,000. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with eight counselors.
I will turn it back over to Town Manager Burt.
Thank you.
We're done. I'm gonna let you say goodbye.
Okay. So on Tuesday, the 27th, are we continuing this same meeting, Mr. Burton? Or should we adjourn now? I'm trying to remember. Counselor Parker, do you remember? If we continue this until until we adopt adopt the resolution? Continue this. It would make, let me, let me give you my rationale and then you tell me if it's flawed or not. We are in a committee of the whole special meeting on Tuesday, the 27th.
We do recess.
We recessed this particular meeting and then we're going to bring this back up in Cal? Yes, okay, very good. Counselor Board along, you have your hand up. I'm not sure if you wanted to say something before we recess the budget meeting?
Yes, I just had a quick question regarding the listed funds. What's the total we used? We used all of what we could and the anticipated, we did not, correct? So, and then is the RTM, are they able to possibly allocate those funds? We have anticipated like we were, or that would not be allowed?
That's not allowed. They can only do the expenditure side.
Okay. And then, okay, and then when we go, just one more clarification, here are my notes here. When we final, when it comes back to the council to enact the budget, if we have heard that those listed funds are going to be used at that time, are we allowed to allocate them at all?
Not at that point, no.
I'm sorry?
No.
I couldn't get it drawn and cut out?
No, not at that point.
So those listed funds would sit for the?
Unless you do, unless you do something with the Mystic Parking, Parking Study mid-year. Or something else comes up.
So something else mid-year could be useful. All right, perfect. Thank you.
All right, now I'm confused because you said to recess, right? If we recess, that means this meeting is going to continue. But when I'm looking at the budget calendar, the budget calendar is showing your regular meeting of Cal. Counselor Parker, what do you think? Not to put you on the spot or anything, but.
Yeah. Well, Chairperson Obree can speak too, but no, because we still have to make a decision on something, do we not, Mr. Manager?
They do have, that's what they'll do at the meeting.
On Tuesday, because isn't it, it's our regular agenda. And then the other half would be the special committee of the budget. Because we have to finish the budget, correct?
Right.
But, okay. It's two separate issues.
If you want to take a minute break, I could look back in the record and see what we did last year.
That would be good, because if we look at the, if you just look at the budget calendar on the 27th, it's calling for a regular meeting to consider the resolution to adopt the budget. At the regular meeting, which
It looks like, yeah.
Which to me would seem like we would need to adjourn the special meeting.
Can I take your credit?
Do you want to?
Can we, can we look that up? Because I thought it was something different.
Let's take five minutes, please. Thank you very much. Sorry to throw a monkey wrench in. I just don't want to mess it up for everybody. Thank you. Five minute, please.
We do adjourn.
Okay, so we're going to adjourn this special meeting. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn the special meeting of the Groton Town Council.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Bum Gardner.
Seconded by Bum Gardner. All those in favor of adjourning the special meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously at 7:12 PM. Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night.
Good night, everybody.
Hi, everyone.